And welcome to our meeting. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order on April 8th, 2025, and ask the city clerk to please call Row.
Commissioner Henderson?
Present.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas?
Present.
Commissioner Wilson? Mayor Bray?
Present. I'll ask Commissioner Thomas to do the invocation, and then we'll remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Darren allowing us to come together today, continue to give us the wisdom to make the right decisions for this city and for every citizen that resides here. We thank you in advance for all your blessings, and we pray these things in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City manager, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mayor, none this evening.
Okay, great. The first thing on the agenda at this point is a proclamation. This is National Public Telecommunications Week. And that really is, you know, in my mind, is a celebration of our telecommunications workers. And in particular, you know, we, city and county, came together this last year to form a joint 911 agency. And we have some of our 911 folks here to accept this proclamation, pass it along. So if you guys want to come up with me, that'd be great. Hi, welcome. Whereas emergency communications professionals serve as the vital link between the public and emergency responders, ensuring swift, accurate, and life-saving assistance to those in need, and whereas public safety telecommunicators work tirelessly 24 hours a day, seven days a week, answering calls for help, providing critical instructions, and coordinating emergency response efforts. And whereas these dedicated professionals exhibit extraordinary professionalism, compassion, and commitment while operating under high-stress conditions to protect and serve our communities. And whereas their work often goes unrecognized, yet their contributions are essential to public safety, providing an invaluable service that enhances emergency response and saves lives. And whereas National Public Safety Telecommunications Week is an opportunity to honor these men and women for their diligence, expertise, and unwavering dedication to the safety and well-being of our citizens. Now therefore, I, George P. Bray, mayor of the city of Paducah, do hereby proclaim April 13th through April 19th, 2025, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and encourage all citizens to express their gratitude and appreciation for the outstanding service provided for public safety telecommunicators.
All right, group hug. All right, let me get in the middle, and we'll all do it.
We'll do, Shannon.
All right, everybody ready?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Here, I'll give you a folder. Now, I'll be over this. We better leave up some.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Could you flip those light switch back when they got bumped?
Yes, absolutely.
Please, thank you.
Okay, now we have some people that want to make public comments tonight. We welcome public comments. Just a couple of, just a few reminders. Speakers must maintain a decorum and respectfulness. And we'll halt those comments if anybody's disrespectful. The commission itself is under no obligation to respond to these public comments, and they need to be limited to three minutes per person. When you're asked to come forward, please make, to make your comments, please state your name, your address, and whether or not you're a city resident, and if you're speaking on behalf of another organization. So. And the first one I have is Shannon Santella. Did I say that correctly?
Santala.
I'm sorry, Santala.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Shannon, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Shannon Santalo. I currently reside with 1330 Oaks Road. My questions are on resources and things for those directly impacted by the 2025 flood. So my first question was, you know, knowing the basic needs from a flood, you know, that our community needs, what resources does the city have already available in step to help the community that was impacted directly? And also, what are the timeframes that these, you know, that the relief funds and the resources gathered? What are the different times? And when are they going to be released, these supplies? And then my third question, how are these funds going to be distributed? What are the qualifications, documents that are going to be needed? And how do these people that are directly impacted, if they don't have the resources of phones, homes, and things like that, how are they going to be able to know and receive these funds and the resources that are available from our city to them directly?
Is that, are you finished with your comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you want to answer any of those? Or we can take a crack at them.
Yeah, well, you know, in a disaster and for our community and all communities, emergency management is the lead agency for disaster relief and coordinating of efforts on that. And so that's not a city function per se, but we do work with emergency management. And oftentimes during disasters, early on, what we do is we recommend that people document, document, and document. Because as a natural disaster is declared at the federal level and at the state level, it helps out the local level. And then those resources, we can then guide to the necessary or the appropriate agency. So if there is some federal resources that come in, we'll be able to have that information. So in relationship to documentation, pictures are always great, video, that type of thing. But documentation, 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 anything and everything that you can will be helpful when it gets to the point that the agency that is, like when FEMA comes in or begins to start that, you have that. And we'll be having that. Right now, they have not shared with us at this time, us or with the county, as to when they'll start mobilizing here. And but as soon as we have that, we will share that, as will the county, as will EMS.
Yes, sir.
And I'll just add something. I mean, the county, as City Manager said, the county is the lead agency, McCracken County. And so we kind of, we follow their lead. But in reality, people come to us and, you know, want to know these things. So we'll certainly do everything we can to help, you know, coordinate those efforts. The Red Cross is on the ground here as well. I mean, they've got, they've actually got over 200 paid people and volunteers, you know, in and around the community. The city's opened a shelter on Martin Luther King Drive that's available for anybody that's not able to get into their home. So they have availability for a couple of hundred people there, really. And so they're manning it 24 hours. And so, and as Darren said, as City Manager said, FEMA, you know, applying for FEMA funds can be overwhelming. You know, just if you listen about disasters in other communities. And so it's important to get as much advice as you possibly can to help make sure that you do it right the first time in order to reduce any delays, because it often does take a lot of time to get reimbursed. But I think our community is FEMA-eligible, so.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Casey Heilig? Hope I pronounced that right, Casey?
You did, absolutely.
Thank you.
Casey Heilig, my address is 3119 Benton Road. I'm here for a couple of reasons, actually. I've reached out to some of our commissioners. I also reached out to you that we needed to be more proactive. I moved here in November of 2007. I lived in New York, I've lived in Florida. I've seen natural disasters at their finest, so to speak. And I asked about being proactive, to put those gates up earlier. There was reasons for it. North Carolina was caught with the pants down. Let's all be serious, okay? I saw, I was in the flood of 2011 here. I was in the ice storm. Our weather has gotten worse since '07, and it just keeps getting worse. And if we don't be proactive in it, we're going to get caught with our pants down, like North Carolina, facts. My dad was deputy commissioner of Public Works in New York. So I'm pretty confident in what I'm saying. He told an upstate community that their dam was going to give. Guess what? They didn't listen. Guess what? They got wiped off the map. My children and my grandchildren in this community. I moved to this community because it was better than New York. It was safer. It was better than Florida, where I was a correctional officer, where I went through hurricanes and had to worry about that. I came here for the safety of my family. And when I reached out to you, I literally had gotten almost, I felt like it was sarcastic. When they made the predictions with this storm, they said we were going to crest that 31. But they also said, meteorologists all over the country said they didn't know how much rain was in these storms. Your response to me was, well, it's only 31 feet. Well, that's kind of what happened with North Carolina. Well, it's not going to be that bad. It's not that much rain. We just had flooding in February. Our water, our grounds can't hold much water. And if we're not being proactive, our pants are going to be down. And who's going to pay? The community. So I think we need to think a little bit better and a little bit more proactive when it comes to flooding in the city. Us county people feel like we're left behind. You're the mayor of Paducah. We're still part of Paducah. We're all one family, whether you're in city or county. It doesn't matter. But we feel left out. And I know disaster here in Paducah, and there's not much help. My house burnt down in 2021. You think I want to be floated away? No, none of us do. We're scared. You're our mayor, and we look to you county and city. The other thing I wanted to bring up tonight was shelters, emergency shelters. If it wasn't for Safe Haven and the old Farley Elementary School, we have a huge community of people that lives in mobile homes. We need to do better. And I'd like to sit with you guys and have these conversations.
Thank you, ma'am. The one comment I'll make is that we will be sitting down with the county. And again, you know, to repeat, I understand I'm the mayor, and the commissioners lead the city. But the county is the lead agency for that. They have a entire, they have people dedicated to that. So I think what we will do is sit down afterwards to make sure that, you know, that we're communicating. I mean, nothing, nobody was meant to be sarcastic to you at all. And so I'm certainly hope that, I'm sorry if it came across that way. But we will sit down and look at how we can improve our response. And as far as putting the floodgates up, you know, that was, you know, we were watching that daily, and the gates did get up.
Oh, I know they got up. I followed very, very closely. I just think we need to be more proactive instead of reactive.
I appreciate the input. I really do. Thank you very much.
I would just like to make a comment. Are you going to have the same conversation with the county?
I'm trying to figure out where, because we don't get that information. Where I go to, who do I talk to?
It's on the internet. But the main thing is that they're really your first, they're your first people to approach, because they are, they're responsible for the county, which is where you live.
Yeah, I understand. But the county is also affected by the stuff the city does too.
Yeah, that's vice versa.
And that's why I want to go both.
I understand.
But yes, I am going to go to the county as well. This is not my one stop, and this is now my mission. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for being here. Myron Scott.
I'm Myron Scott, living at 158 Baggett Lane. And of course, it's been all over the internet, so. I've spoken with, I've emailed, and I spoke a while ago with the City Manager, and I spoke yesterday with Commissioner Thomas. And I would rather speak to your face and try to email you, just like I explained to him. And I'm not trying, I might come off some way as disrespectful in an email, but I don't mean to. And I respect your position as leaders. But we had a discussion about the temporary pumps that were put in. In 2011, and I know that's all water under the bridge, and no pun intended, in 2011, there were seven or eight pumps put in, and they were wearing us out. And I made a call to the city engineer at the time and told him, you know, it was wearing us out. And he said, tried to explain to me that all had to do with hydraulics. And I said, well, explain it to me. I'm not an engineer. And he said, let me put it this way. We've got to keep those businesses at exit 11 open. He denied saying it later. I was the only one that heard it. May nobody in this room believe me that he said that. Still, water under the bridge. 2019, I probably shouldn't have, but I walked down the flood wall, and there was a pump running behind Duck Creek Campground, pumping directly over into the ditch that runs right by my house. Sunday afternoon, I worked over at the concrete plant. I would come down to the plant to check something, start out through the light, and there's a pump behind a truck from a company that we buy pumps from. So I knew what it was, followed him out there. We watched them set it on top of, on top of the, it's sitting on top of the levee right now. We have pictures and drone footage, all that stuff. Anyway. My point behind that is, is we're going to take all the water God can give us and will give us. But, and he explained to me the reason why. Regardless, respectfully to you, I disagree with that. But it wears us out. And we know where we live. And, but we pay the same percentage of property tax that anybody in the county pays. So we feel like that we don't need other people's water. And I'm just going to leave that there. But I understand something has, it has to go somewhere. But it's, and it's like the scenario I gave him a while ago. If I bought a house next to any of y'all, and I had water in my yard, and you didn't have water in your yard, I can't pump it into your yard. It's illegal. So it's the same difference. That's just my opinion, so.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Thank you for being here.
I have a question. That exit 11, that's all in the county, right? I mean, is any of that?
Yes, the.
In the city?
No, exit 11 is in the county, which, you know, the flood levy, you know, extends that we have responsibility.
I know that's us.
Us as well. Yep.
In 2011, the reason I was, the reason I was talking was to keep those businesses open. Because Island Creek could not keep up with pump station.
Yeah, I can absolutely understand that. I just, the question I'm asking is that we've got the city pumping water from county over the levee into the county. So it's kind of like there's no, I guess no good deed goes unpunished. In a way, you know what I'm saying. We're spending our money and resources to do that. And so I don't know if there's been a discussion with the county to say, is that, are you guys good with that? Or what? Because it is in their jurisdiction, even though we are being.
Well, we're responsibility for, we have responsibility for the flood wall.
Yeah.
And flood control. And so I don't, you know, I'm not the expert here. But, you know, you mentioned Island Creek. And, you know, that is an issue for us. I mean, and so we're basically trying to manage, you know, water levels. But we're, you know, throwing, you know, water, you know, from the wet side of the flood wall over to, you know, outside of the flood wall. And trying to.
Outside is the wet side.
Okay. Yeah, vice versa. From the dry side to the wet side, thank you. So, but the dry side ain't dry right now. And so that's, and we're caught in the middle.
I understand. But I, the problem, I mean, that's not the problem we had with the dam and the problem we got with the now is. Can I sit back up here?
Sure.
Right after that happened, there was a meeting at Simpson High School with Fish and Wildlife. They wanted to make all that area up by Light and Road where the little laydown yard is, as soon as you go over the wall. They want to make all of that a wildlife refuge. So I stepped up to the podium, and I told them. I told the guy, I said, you want to make all this a wildlife refuge? He said, yeah. I said, how about I set a pump on top of that flood wall and pump all the water from the other side over into that, including the sewage pond on Span Lane? Because it came directly to our house too, trust me. Over onto that, he said, you can't do that. I said, it did, it happened. So.
Thank you very much for being here, Mr. Scott.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments very much. Okay, before I move into the rest of the agenda, I just wanted to point out to folks, to those watching and who will get our reports after the meeting. I'm sure the commissioners have seen this, but we're taking a survey on the airport. There's a lot of work going into improving air service in our community. And so a group of leaders in the community have been, you know, working hard to try to find, try to help us make the best decision that we can as our bid comes up for EAS service coming this fall. And so it would be very beneficial if everyone would, that flies, even if you only fly once a year, take the survey. We need the data. With that, I'll move to the consent agenda. And there's one item that I'd like to move on the consent agenda. That's item E, which is the sale of surplus property. I'd like to move that, if I could. Are you with me?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So we will, Madam Clerk, move that to municipal order after ordinance introduction and before discussion? Or do you want to move that before ordinance adoption?
Let's put it as the next thing, right after we finish the consent agenda.
All right, thank you. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. The city clerk will read the items recommended for approval unless any commissioner would like an item removed for separate discussion, which I have already done. So anybody else? Everybody else good? I'll go ahead and ask the city clerk to please read the items recommended for approval.
Approved minutes for the March 25th, 2025 Board of Commissioners meeting. Receiving filed documents. Appointment of Tab Brockman to the Brooks Stadium Commission to replace Chris Kappick, who resigned. Said terms shall expire December 31st, 2027. Personnel actions. A municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute an application for a 2025 Kentucky League of Cities Workers Compensation Safety Grant in the amount of $3,000 toward reimbursement for personal protective equipment for the fire department, accepting any grant funds awarded by KLCIS, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same.
So move. Second.
Call Row.
Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
So let's, I'll ask the city clerk to please read item E from the consent agenda that we moved down.
A municipal order declaring the real property located at 729 South 13th Street, Paducah, Kentucky, to be surplus property, accepting the bid of Shelia Kirkendall for Teddy Bear Development in the amount of $1, and authorizing the mayor to execute the deed and all documents related to same.
So move. Second.
Sorry to surprise you with this one, Carol, but.
Absolutely fine.
But I think it kind of points out some of the work that we're doing.
It does.
You know, and so I thought it was a good idea to, you know, just talk about it for a couple of minutes.
Sure, absolutely. It's part of the surplus property program, and Ms. Kirkendall made an application, put in a bid. And she has shown us what she would like to do with the property. And we've seen the plans. It's a very full plan. I believe, right off the top of my head, it's a 1,400-square-foot home, three-bedroom, two-bath. It's about three properties over, kind of in that little corner there on 13th, but over from Walter Jatine. But it's in that first area that we started trying to work and do some neighborhood revitalization. And she would like to have three total new builds before she's finished, but she's doing them one at a time. So we're just awarding the property one at a time. But she's provided funding and all the things that were needed to check that off. So absolutely, we're excited that she's taking this opportunity and working here in our community.
What's the value of what she's going to be constructing?
It's probably going to be close to $225,000, give or take.
Okay.
I think she's getting bids on what the exterior will look like, and some of that can change the value. We've seen the plan, but there's part of it that may be brick and hardy, those kind of things.
Yeah, I think it's a pretty good return. I mean, given selling a piece of property for a dollar and then getting, you know, surplus property that, you know, that really hasn't added value. And then we're going to have a $225,000, you know, build on there, you know. So that's an example of the program really working, which is kind of what I want to talk about.
And we'll talk about that tonight. We have a PowerPoint that comes up for discussion. And we talk about some of the surplus properties And we talk about some of the surplus properties and some of the projects that have been leveraged already in the program area, some that have been outside as well. And we just ran some projections based on $180,000 homes, but I feel pretty certain the majority of those are going to be above that dollar amount.
Yeah.
Right.
Thank you.
Thanks for.
Thank you very much. Please call roll.
Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Bray.
Aye. Okay, we have one municipal order tonight. I'll ask the city clerk to read it.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt a municipal order entitled "A Municipal Order Approving an Addendum to the Development Agreement Between the City of Paducah, Kentucky, Circle Properties LLC and 314 Condominiums Association Corporation" for the property located at 324 Broadway and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same.
So move. Second.
Pretty exciting. It's the Kreske property and this is the last piece. I thought I might see a cartwheel or two up there, but it is.
I will if you will.
Okay, well.
I don't know. I don't want to see any workers' comp.
Just have a nurse.
But we are excited and this is, is the final piece. You'll note in, in the addendum, there's a little separate, there's two transfers of property. And that has to do with the cuts that are coming into the 314 condo. They're, they're continuing to develop that project, which is right next door to the Kreske property. So that, we've done this addendum to the development agreement and it just talks about the transfer and attaches the plat. So everyone's clear about who's doing what.
So big picture, when are they going to start construction and when will they be finished?
15 months total, and it appears that they will probably break ground in May.
Okay.
Great. Part of the agreement is that the development has to commence 30 days from the transfer of the property. So.
And.
And we have to schedule that. And I talked actually to the attorneys this morning and it looks like we'll be able to do that probably within the next 10 days. And so then they'll break ground within 30 days of that. So.
Okay, good news.
Should be May.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good news.
And just for the commission's understanding, there is, as we do with all these, there is a reverter clause. Should they fail to meet up to that, it does come back to the city.
Okay, very good. Okay, call roll, please.
Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Bray.
Aye. We have one ordinance to adopt. This is the second reading and I'll ask the city clerk to please read it.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Amending Chapter 42 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah." This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance amendment updates procedures associated with code enforcement and nuisances in the city of Paducah in order to conform to amendments to the relevant statutes and regulations since Chapter 42 was last updated. Language is added to limit extensions provided to property owners to bring property up to code and to permit code officials to request that violations be heard by the Code Enforcement Board. This ordinance amendment also updates filing and fees consistent with increased cost associated with administration and filing. This ordinance is amended to add a codified mechanism for the procurement of administrative search warrants, which will enable code enforcement officials to enter upon and to conduct inspections of private premises within the city in order to ensure compliance with the minimum fire, housing, and sanitation standards, while ensuring oversight of detached magistrate by requiring a sworn affidavit, an application setting forth the basis therefore, the grounds for issuance, contents of the warrant, and execution thereof. Provisions are added to define enclosed building in reference to vehicles and appliances and to declare return of junk vehicles or appliance following abatement or removal pursuant to ordinance to be a violation. The ordinance amendment adds a provision declaring illegal, dilapidated, or obsolete signs to be nuisances. The amendment adds language permitting the battalion chief to act in place of the deputy chief in charge of Fire Prevention Division in event of the deputy chief's absence. Finally, this amendment updates provisions related to residential rental occupancy permits, requiring annual inspection of rental premises, removing provisions for temporary permits, clarifying appeal rights as may be applicable under KRS Chapter 227 or 815 KAR 10060, and providing that a landlord's failure to cooperate in rental inspection shall be caused for suspension, revocation, or denial of rental occupancy permits.
So move. Second.
We wrote, we, we had the first reading a couple of weeks ago. Are there any questions from anyone? Okay, I'll ask the city clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Bray.
Aye. And we have one ordinance to introduce tonight and I'll ask the city clerk to please read it.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 2024-06-8815" entitled "An Ordinance Adopting the City of Paducah, Kentucky Annual Operating Budget for the Fiscal Year July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025 by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government." This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024 and ending June 30, 2025, as adopted by ordinance number 2024-06-8815, be amended by the following appropriations. Increase revenues and expenditures for the CDBG fund by $200,000.
So move second.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, and City Clerk. Back on March 11th, you all approved accepting the CDBG grant on behalf of Four Rivers for their recovery services. Each year when we get that grant, one of the requirements for receiving that funding is to do this budget amendment showing that we are accepting that $200,000 into our budget. And then we will turn around, we keep 2,500 of that and we will give 197,500 dollars to Four Rivers out of this.
It's an annual thing, right?
It is, it is. This is part of our conditions of accepting the grant award.
Okay, and they, they're the ones that find the grant? I mean, is, I mean, I know we do it every year and I'm just, just trying to get some context around it.
Sure. So with that being a community development block grant, the city has to apply on their behalf. We are an eligible recipient. Under CDBG, this particular pot of money is designated for recovery services. And so that is how we're involved. We apply on their behalf into that special pot of money so that they can get additional funding for their staff there.
Okay. Any other questions from anybody? We all good? Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Hope. Thank you very much. With that, we'll move to, we have two discussion items tonight. The first one, we're in the middle of budget season. We're in the process of working through our budget numbers. Appreciate all the effort that John and his staff, as well as Darren and the, and all the staff are putting into this effort. And so I'll invite John to make some comments.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Clerk. Tonight, we go into round two of the budget review. In fiscal '25, the year that we're in right now, the budget includes 345 full-time equivalents or full-time employees. It's kind of loud out this door here. And that, in that 345 full-time employees, 288 of those are paid for out of the general fund with another 23 in 911. And the balance of that number are in the solid waste fund and the fleet maintenance funds. Now, tonight's presentation will focus only on the general fund from a 50,000-foot view. And then we'll drill down into the general fund and take a closer look at specifically personal services, that is, human capital, which is made up of salaries, fringe benefits, and things of that nature to pay those who serve the public. So. Here we go. This slide shows the projected '26 general fund budget by expenditure category and is shown as a percentage of the overall cost. Now, fiscal '25, the '26 budget has not been approved yet. In fact, you haven't even seen it. So we're trying to keep this very high level. And you will eventually get to see that on our, on our 101s meetings soon. And as you can see, the category called personal services, that's the pie piece on the left side in red. It's the biggest piece. It makes up two-thirds of all general fund expenses. That's followed by commodities and then that's followed by contractual services. And you see the percentage of breakdowns. So the vast majority of the expenditures are for people. Personal services in this case, as I mentioned earlier, represents 288 full-time positions and some part-time in the general fund. Now, short-term history suggests that on average, we paid for 260 full-time persons or positions, which is about 60, which is about 90% of what we budgeted for. The 260 we're paid for on average had the 288 budgeted. Over the past 12 months, that is. Now, I want to break that down, break that personal services down a little bit further to give you a better idea of what we're paying for here. In this graphic, we show the personal services, which is again, the cost of the city employees in the case specifically paid for only out of the general fund. And you can see in red there.
Excuse me, John?
Yes, sir.
Brian, would you mind asking the folks outside to move downstairs or outside on the sidewalk? Thank you.
Thanks, that'll help. Okay, so personal services are simply are the cost of city employees, and in this case, those city employees that are being paid out of the general fund. And then as you move into the next category there on the far right, that red pie, that's salaries and wages. They make up 57% of personal service costs, followed by overtime at about 9% of the cost, and then other supplemental income at 3%. Simply put, 69% of personal services are for all types of wages. Supplemental income specifically is primarily made up of state incentive pay for hazardous duty employees. That's foreign police, clothing allowance, and special duty pay. Then the next category on the left side, it's in yellow, retirement. That makes up 19% of all personal services, which is then followed by health insurance at 8% and the balance is for all other benefits. All other benefits would include FICA, Medicare, work-comp insurance, life and disability insurances. This slide illustrates the total fiscal '26 general fund personal services by department. I know it's very difficult to read on the far right side. Left side is way easier to read. It provides size, perspective, and a given year in terms of employee cost. The upper-left pie, that's the dark red, and the lower-left fuchsia pie pieces represent the cost of the fire department at 29% of the full cost, hall cost, and police department at 34%, respectively. Public safety departments make up 63% of all personal service costs, which shouldn't come to you as a surprise. The four largest general fund departments, police, fire, public works, and parks, make up 80% of all personal service cost. Again, on a monthly basis, we provide the KPIs and those are the three departments we always focus on.
Right.
The balance of departments includes administration, finance, technology, city clerk, CX, planning, engineering, flood wall, and human resources and risk management. In order to give you perspective over time, this slide illustrates the general fund's cost of personal services from fiscal '22 to projected '26. The fiscal '22 total audited personal service cost was about $27.3 million as compared to the upcoming proposed fiscal '26 cost, which is projected to be $34 million. And it's worth noting that the general fund full-time employees count back in '22 was 283 and increased to 288 in the year we're in right now, fiscal '25, the current year. The cost of personal services has grown at an annual rate of approximately 5% from '22 to '26.
And how, what was that again?
The, the average annual rate of increase from '22 to '26 is about 5% per year. Some years more, some years less. That's really the whole story. I don't know what else to tell you, but be glad to take any kind of questions you might have.
Well, I'll just say this. I know that, you know, one of the commission priorities and one of the, the ask from the departments was, you know, to take a look at personnel. And so I know that we are in the process of doing that. I know as we go through the budget discussions, you know, we'll get guidance from all the commissioners, you know, on that. But, you know, personal services employees are a big, they're very important to the city. They're also the biggest part of our budget. And so it's, you know, they're important discussions and we'll treat them that way.
Any other questions that I can help you with?
Thank you very much, John. Appreciate you being here. Appreciate all the work your guys are putting in on the, on the budget.
Well, you're about to be tasked with this too.
I'm getting ready to go out of town. Okay, the last item on the agenda, we will have an executive session, but is invite Director Carol Galt to come up and talk about the South Side revitalization plan. And it looks like she's got a sidekick there.
I asked my sidekick Palmer to join me today because I thought it was important that the community recognize Palmer and Palmer's face. He, he will actually, and has been, the one primarily out in the South Side on a daily basis. And Commissioner Henderson and I talked the other day and he brought it to my attention how important it is that the community know who it is that is representing the city and who's working on the streets and going door-to-door on behalf of the community. So I asked Palmer to join me today for that reason. So we're going to tag team this.
Palmer, I saw your mom and dad last night, so they were, they were, they were very proud of you, you know? And I told them, I told them you were doing a great job, so.
An introduction.
That's a disadvantage living in a small city.
So the bar was just raised.
I think we can get started.
Indeed, we can.
All right, we just want to make note, you have in your packet hopefully a handout about the logo. This is the logo that we have decided on to use in the, in the South Side neighborhood. And the handout that you have in your folder talks about why we chose that. And it talks about the partnership created through the hands. And it talks about a rising root and, and how we're, we're coming up. We're, we're changing things, but in a good way to make it a little more positive. It, the, the leaves are a nod to the strong roots that have been in the area. But you can see all of that there and why we've selected this to, to kind of brand the South Side with.
It's awesome.
All right, okay. So let's go, Lindsay. Can I hit it? Can do, can we do it?
You can do it. Yeah, if you hit enter, you'll go forward, backspace, go back.
All right, all right, here we go. So what, we thought it was important to make a comparison. One of the things that was, everybody talks about when they talk about the South Side is what exactly is the South Side? What defines the South Side? So we've done revitalization plans before. We've done them in Lower Town and Fountain Avenue. But I think it's really important to note, that Lower Town, when we talked about that, was 400 parcels. When we talk about Fountain Avenue, it was 307 parcels. When we talk about the South Side in its entirety, it's a whole neighborhood that combines eight neighborhoods together. And it's 36, a little over 3,600 parcels. So that's why we're doing it in phases and starting to have that conversation and break it down. Because this is so large. And until you really look at it in comparison, I don't think people realize how, how big the difference is. But it's one-tenth, Fountain Avenue is one-tenth of the total South Side area.
Before we talk about what we're doing going forward and what we recommend, for further context, I thought we'd talk briefly about some of the work that's previously been ongoing and currently completed through the South Side Steering Committee. In about 2022, that group was formed to really guide the preliminary engagement process of the South Side, identifying the priorities. When it comes to housing, they were able to develop the first original program area. This was in a section of the Walter Jettan and Uppertown neighborhoods. This contained 454 parcels. Additionally, in this area, two incentives were created. One is the new construction and major rehab incentive. This is the type that you saw previously in Fountain Avenue and Lower Town. But there was another incentive as well that was developed based off that community input. And this was a home repair micro grant, you know, smaller individual projects, whether it's just a roof or windows, something smaller supposed to the really big grant. The maximum award of the micro grant was $5,000 and the new construction capped out at $27,000. Some data totals of this area, when it comes to things that are completed, you know, from taking an application in, reviewing it, approving it, getting it out the door, the work being finished. One new home has gone through that entire process and is currently with a new tenant over on Oscar Cross. Six homes are under contract in this area right now. That's for four new construction and two major rehabs. When it comes to interested parties, ones that are committed to building in this area, we have three currently in the works. And then looking slightly outside of this area, we're seeing interest start to trickle in in the surplus property. People have been going, of course, to utilize our program in this area because of the incentives. But now we're starting to see interest outside of it. This is the kind of sign we're looking to expand this area. This is meant to expand over time, but now we're starting to kind of see the metrics. When it comes to money, just an estimate of all of the totals of the values of all the projects going on that have either been finished or have been allocated, it is $2.8 million. That's all the homes, all the different projects. And the total of. And the total of city money that was able to go into this area to create that total was $59,000. It's $27,000 going to the new home, and then $32,000 of that was that home repair and beautification. That's a really important program for us to include. But going forward, we want to grow.
Just real quick, if you go back to that last slide, I'm sorry, Palmer, what's the $900,000?
That is for starting to look at the properties outside of this area. So we're still looking at different estimates of projects, either ones that we hadn't really put together, but at this point, we're starting to kind of fill in all the gaps in this original area.
And that's outside the South Side?
It's outside that project area, right in the Walter Jeter area. It's outside this area, over here on Fifth Street, in that area. It would, it's included in the program area, but these, that $900,000 are people that have come forward, and we know that they're getting ready to build. We know where their locations are, and that's total estimate of, of what that improved.
That's an estimate.
It's an estimate.
That's an estimate.
We ran those numbers based on $180,000 per home. Some are a little higher than that, some are a little lower than that, so we, we kind of ran it on an average of 180,000.
And going back to the previous bullet points, I think I understood this, we, the city spent $59,000, which I'm not sure what the relationship was, but there was in total $2.8 million in the current project area, you know, most of which wasn't leveraged from us, it was just investment from the fact.
Buying all the resources together, but for, you know, completed projects, ones that aren't just, you know, conditional wards where they're still working on the project, it is that $59,000 that is completely, you know, started in the city, gone out, went to a homeowner. So that's what's been dispersed.
With the two major rehabs, what's, is it just a full gutting of the house, so?
It can be. It's, again, for those larger projects where you're doing very serious work. The way these two incentives currently work is that they are reimbursement grants, so you submit your project in advance, here's how much you're going to estimate it's going to cost, and each of them has a minimum investment. Micro grant, as it sounds, is a smaller one, and that's maximum award, again, you're only getting $5,000. It's 50/50 match.
But to Commissioner Henderson's point, the two, the two rehabs, were they totaled? Do you, do you know where they are?
Yes, we do have those, and these two major rehabs are coming up as well. We utilize Sharon Poe and the Paducah Alliance of Neighbors, they're the ones that are able to fill in all those gaps of those really big projects, so.
Okay.
Any other points to that?
No.
Again, those are just two individual incentives, but when it comes to full revitalization, especially in contrast to the existing plans previously with Lower Town and Fountain Avenue, there's actually a lot more that we can do and can offer, such as we've done before, that will, of course, relate to expanding the area and expanding the incentives, but there's a couple different things around it that can actually really boost the revitalization. Carol, would you like to speak on those points?
As, as we talk about what, and to answer your question, I think more pertinent, it's over $50,000 on each one of those. I think it's maybe what you're looking for, is that what, what you were looking for to answer the two major rehabs? Is that what you were looking for, the dollar amount? That's what I thought, maybe. Okay, so what we're talking about here is the revitalization plan, and the things that it's going to need to stabilize the area. And, and to be able to do that, we're going to have to expand the area. We're going to also have to expand the incentives. One of the things that we've talked about is gap funding assistance, and what that would mean is when we met, Mary could recall, when we met with the bank, they talked about the loan-to-value ratio, that one of the concerns is, is that they go into the neighborhood and people start to build new, and they want to sell that home, and they, they may need 250,000, I'm using these numbers as hypotheticals just so we can understand, but let's just say they need $250,000 out of it. The concern is, in the beginning, that they may not appraise at that. They may not be able to get comps to support that in that very close area. So one of the things that we've talked about doing is providing some gap funding assistance, and let's, again, use the $250,000 number, and hypothetically, we would provide 70, if they qualify, and the bank will put them through all, all the stringent things to make sure everyone's creditworthy, we'll work through all that, but we would provide $75,000 on a non-performing mortgage, so they would, they would actually borrow 150,000 or 175,000, whatever that would be, but if you're using the 250 number, we're going to say 175,000. And then, we would come in and close the gap on what, what is needed and maybe what it appraises at for that 75,000. We would do that in a non-performing mortgage, we would go ahead, loan them the money, they could use it for the down payment, and we would file a second mortgage behind the bank, and as long as they lived in the property, five, seven, 10 years, we can do it on a sliding scale based on what the appraisal comes in, but let's just say that we gave them the full 75,000 on the $250,000 house, they lived in it for 10 years, they would not have to pay any of that back. It works as a forgivable loan.
So how long, in that, have you developed the, the timelines yet on how long they have to live in order to?
If, if they took the full amount.
10 years.
10 years, if they take the full amount, yes. My suspicion is, is that not, we're, we've, we're working on a sliding scale, and we're waiting from some input back from the bank, and we're also waiting on some, and I've asked for some realtor information, because I think they can tell us what properties are working or selling for and what that sliding scale we can work toward, because I think if it's a one-bedroom, one-bath, clearly it's probably going to be 125 to 155,000, but if it's a three-bedroom, two-bath, you're looking at 200,000 and upwards, so we would fill in the gap funding.
So how, how will you develop what the gap funding that's needed in each situation? How, how will that be determined?
That, that's what we're waiting for the realtors, the information from the realtors. I think they're going to help us define exactly, pinpoint in that area. We, we know what it would work if it were on the West End hypothetically, because the home values have stabilized there, and it's been the same, and we know that's the higher end. It will translate, it's just figuring out exactly where those gaps are.
Okay.
Let me ask you.
Does everybody understand that?
Go ahead, if you will. Will you? I'll reel to the. So, what if, smart aleck. So what if, so you're focusing the gap funding really on the buyer, and if the, I think in the Fountain Avenue, we did it on the seller, so the seller had basically built it, they had $250,000 in a piece of property, and because it doesn't appraise that way, then it was really, I'm just making up numbers because I don't remember, you know, a $200,000 piece of property, then the incentive would go to the builder, and that would keep him whole to, of course, either way it keeps him whole, but.
Right.
You just want that, them to be able to go back and buy another, buy and build another piece of property, so. I guess now that I've wasted everyone's time here, it's probably achieving, it's probably achieving the same thing, so.
It, it is achieving the same thing, and we also have, when we talk about a menu, one of the things that we wanted to talk about, and you'll see it in the incentives are guaranteed buybacks, but we would prefer to do it this way on the front end, because we know that we're going to get people in the home, and from what conversations we've had with developers, I think they, they'll take it either way, because it, it accomplishes the same goal.
And, and also, by focusing on the buyer aspect of it, hopefully, you're incentivizing them to stay and put down roots and grow in that community, whereas if it's on the developer's side, you don't get that same benefit, so that's one of the considerations.
That's right. That's right. So in addition, very similar to what we did in Fountain Avenue with the South Side plans, I skipped property tax moratorium. That's something we've heard a lot of consideration from the South Side Steering Committee. People are concerned about their property taxes going up. That, we'll bring that back to you when we work it out, flesh it out, but that would be in the plan.
They're concerned because their property values are going up?
They, they're, they're concerned about their increased taxes that they're going to have to pay at the end of the day. If, if they're paying on $100,000 today, and you have several new builds that go in, and it raises all the property value in that area, in that neighborhood, then it will increase their property tax through the assessments. So they have a lot of concern that their property taxes are going to go up. So there's a way that we can step through this, and we just have to outline it in the plan, but we can provide some comfort, so there's, there's not unnecessary angst.
Right, and, and that also, when you go that route, it also gives an opportunity for limiting gentrification and displacement of, of those in that area as well.
Can I just jump, I'm sorry, were you finished? Can I just jump back a little bit to, I know you said that there will be stringent qualifications, obviously, the creditworthiness and all that, but is there any room to help someone who might be on the cusp?
Yes.
And, 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 you know?
Yes, and we're working with the bank, they're scheduled, we've met, the mayor and I met with CFSB, and they're scheduled to roll out the things and, and the tools, if you will, that they're going to employ on May the 1st. Prior to that, we have already started working with Angie Wilkie and Operation Hope, and we're going to have quarterly meetings with Operation Hope.
Talked about, yeah.
Yes, they're, she's coming into the South Side, and she'll be at various places. She did the first one at CFSB about two weeks ago. Expect to have her in WC Young and some other places, but she comes in, and she works with candidates who may be on the cusp to help show them what it takes to, to be able to be a homeowner. And not only getting in the home, but how to prepare to maintain the home. It, it's strictly not just being able to make the first home purchase, it's how we budget to maintain, you know, if, if you have a pipe that breaks, or it, you know, whatever home maintenance may incur, it, it can be expensive. So she walks everyone through those steps and, and proportions out budgets and helps them do those kinds of things.
And what's the plan to, to get, to increase the attendance, to get the people there that perhaps need to hear all of that?
We're going to address some of that here in just a minute.
Okay.
But it really is basically going door-to-door. It's a quarterly newsletter, it's, it's creating and building relationships in the neighborhood so that they understand that we're there to help and, and bring the community along together, that it's a true partnership.
Good deal.
That's where Palmer comes in.
Yes, it is.
That's right.
It is. So the other thing that we want to talk about and highlight are the things that are already going on in, in this area. You know, the WC Young Center, until recently, I had not been that involved in the WC Young Center, and I've attended a, a board meeting, but had conversations with their, their board president, and they already have rentals almost every week. I was really surprised at how active the WC Young Center is. It does need some work, it does probably need a facelift, but they are having events there almost weekly. There's some type of rental. Of course, we all know the Hotel Metropolitan, you just talked about that co-stewardship agreement with them, and all the improvements that are going to happen there. We've seen what's happened with the Dunlap and the Paducah Symphony Orchestra. Also, there's an area that the Creative and Cultural Council has highlighted to start a public art installation, that RFP has already been out and back, and they're working to try to select an artist to do some public art in the Jeter neighborhood. There's Coleman Park improvements that are going on now. We had to cancel the Greenway Trail meeting last week, but it's coming, and then, as you all know, we're working with Mary and Dr. Hamilton to, to try to land that project on the South Side as well.
Yeah, you didn't even mention the, the Lincoln Project either, you know?
We did not.
So.
Right. There's several in here that we didn't mention, but yes.
You know, one of the things that I experienced, you know, and I just had a conversation today, you know, there's some people that just don't sense the movement, you know, in the, in the South Side, and I think, first of all, is because, you know, they don't understand, they don't put the, you know, one plus one, they don't, they don't put it all together to see where we're kind of starting. So I think I'm, I understand that, but also, we're in a limited, we're in a smaller area. And going back to your first slide, you know, where it's 2,600 parcels in the South Side, you know, people all over the South Side think it themselves isn't in the South Side, and they just don't understand Hotel Metropolitan, Dunlap, you know, how does that help me?
Right.
But, but it all fits together, and it's going to take time, and that's why I've been so adamant about communicating, communication, communication, communication of what we're doing with the residents and others as to what's going on. And some of it, we can't speed up, but we just need to let people know what we're doing.
Yeah, I, I was just thinking, it would be helpful, because we are doing a lot, and so, and I think we've talked about it a little bit, and that is just to be intentional in making sure that the residents actually see, even if they don't see a new house, or they don't see this or that, that they see a sign that says, "Coming to your community," or "Coming Soon," or "Another project by," you know, something like that.
That's a great point.
You will see that on a few slides coming up.
All right, let them go, let them go, let them go.
He's got your sign, "Coming Soon."
Actually, I got your notes in.
That's right. So like, you're exactly right in terms of making this visual, you know, because we're talking about programs, you know, applications people can use, but where's this exactly going to be, and then how can people actually engage with it on a day-to-day basis? So moving forward from this, here is our proposed expanded area. So again, this is still within the Jeter and Uppertown region, but this is an expansion of that original area. This is a total of 1,061 parcels, it's about 83 square city blocks. When it comes to this area in particular, we've identified this in terms of our community engagement, wanting to see some development in here, but also, this is where we're starting to see the use of surplus property, of bids going on this outside of the original incentive area, and so we're expanding it this way from Kentucky Avenue down to Caldwell, and from the train tracks out to the Loop, Third Street. One interesting data point of this is the amount of vacant property. The following slide from here is going to show a map of all of this, but in this specific region, this new expanded blue one, there is a total of 405 vacant parcels. So out of that 1,061, 405 are vacant. That equates to about a 38% vacancy rate. When it comes to, you know, looking back to a previous plan, such as Fountain Avenue, that area was only 307 parcels, again, much smaller of where we're expanding to right now here in the South Side. It's this kind of phased approach that's going to be necessary for us to establish this area and really focus our operations within it. Here's this map that I mentioned in terms of visualizing this area in terms of vacancy. All of the developed and housed property is shown here in this light blue with the vacant property here in yellow. And so, transitioning this over to this area to include this whole region before we move on to phases down the line. This is going to be a long-term plan, it's going to take years of operation to cover effectively the whole South Side, but this is the first recommendation of the plan to expand our original incentive area to this full region here. Do you have any immediate questions or thoughts with it? When it comes, again, long-term, this is something that is going to have to be addressed in terms of revisiting our plan when it comes to looking at later phases. Some of the data that we're using to, you know, decide to expand in the first place was the amount of vacant property, the number of new builds and businesses and homes that we're able to establish in our existing area, and then again, looking at the interest outside of your current area. And so, again, this is something down the road, this is not a final phase two by any means, this is something that we'll go back to the community and re-engage with over time, over time, to really see what the natural flow of this is. But that's what we're starting to expect, is that it's going to grow out of our original areas and kind of grow as a wave as you go over time. This estimated phase two is around the Cobb Park neighborhood, contains about 841 parcels. Again, using that vacancy rate, there's about 253 vacant parcels in that area, which is about 30%. And that's about the region, but what's going to go happen inside of it? Carol, any points?
Yes, this, this goes back to talking about the incentives, and the two that are at the, we've also put a handout, so you can take it home, and if you have questions, you can look at it again, but what, those two that we first talked about, the new construction and major rehabilitation, those have been operating for a while. It's how to develop the, the vacant property, it's used to rehabilitate the homes, and it's, we're going to work in partnership with local banks. And like I said, CFSB has already stepped up, and so, the other things that we're going to have to really focus on is people that are staying in their homes, are staying in that area, but they want to improve their home. We've seen that work through the micro grants, where they've gotten windows, or they, you know, have utilized it for flooring, or they've utilized it for a roof. I think that we will probably see these over and over again. There isn't a limit to the amount, it, it's just a matching grant up to 50%, so if they, it only goes to $5,000 right now, 10,000, it would be the amount of the investment up to 5,000. But we're, we're seeing people do just a little bit at a time, but they're starting to really take care of their property, and I think that's what we want, is to be able to work with them, partner, and, and help. help them do that. The other things that we anticipate are developers' incentives. We talk about a possible buyback. That may be something that we'll have to do at some point. I don't know that we want to come out of the gate with that. Um, we're kind of thinking that we may want to come out of the gate and try the, the buyer incentive and see if we can make sure that, that we make good headway with that. Um, we can always revert back and pivot and offer the buyback. The buyback's something that you did in Fountain Avenue. You, at the end of the day, the city did four total and I believe on average lost about $65,000 each. Um, but it, it got the program up and going. Um, the loan, the home buyer incentives that I talked about filling in that gap will address the loan-to-value ratio, which right now is our biggest concern. But we do have developers, interesting enough, that are, um, excited. They're waiting for us to expand the area, they want to be able to take advantage. And, um, I, I'm, I think you'll be surprised at how many developers are gonna be willing to, to kind of step out and take the risk.
So what you're telling us is this is gonna kick off May 1?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
There, we've got a timeline in here, but CFSB will roll their product out May 1. But what we're saying to you is, is that we'll be bringing back these incentives because they'll have to have some ordinance changes to expand some things that, there's lots of work that you'll, you'll be seeing a lot of us. But it'll probably be a regular thing. Here's the next steps of, of what is required by KRS. KRS 99, typically in planning, we function out of KRS 100, but when you start talking revitalization and neighborhood changes, it goes, it reverts back to KRS 99. And there are lots of things that we're required to do by that statute, whether it's notice, public hearing, uh, work with the, in the Planning Commission, work with urban renewal, you all have heard URCDA referred to. So at one point, urban renewal and the Planning Commission were consolidated. We're going to reconstitute those and separate them again. The, the surplus property will start to function and go through URCDA. And then the Planning Commission will deal with the normal entities that it deals with regularly. But we're having this discussion today, we're gonna have a very similar discussion with the Planning Commission next Monday. And then on April the 16th, right now, we're, we're poised to send out notifications of a public hearing. And that public hearing will be held on May the 1st, which is actually a Thursday, I just noticed the typo there. But on Thursday, May the 1st, the Planning Commission Public Hearing, and they'll, they'll introduce the plan. Everybody that is a property owner in the program area has to be notified in writing. So we'll send out over a thousand notices and let them know about the, the public hearing. Then on May 5th, the Planning Commission, if they like everything that they hear, would adopt it and recommend it up to you. And then on Tuesday, May 13th, we plan to be back here with the first reading of the ordinance to adopt the plan and the first reading of an ordinance to repeal urban renewal Planning Commission consolidation. And then it would set it up, once it's passed, that you would have to repopulate URCDA. Right now, they function as one. Then we're back here to adopt the plan on May the 27th, adopt the repealing of the combination of those two, and it reestablishes, um, urban renewal as a separate entity. And then you would populate urban renewal on June the 10th. The only, I guess, hitching the giddy up is that the plan will not go public until right around April 16th. You all will not have seen it in its entirety and its final version. We can push that date back, but we're sensing that you all are ready to get this rolling. So we have.
Well, you can share it with the commission.
We can.
Prior, when, when will you know? When will you, you know what we're gonna do prior to that April 16th meeting?
I, I would say that we will know probably by the middle of next week. I mean, April 16th is just right around the corner. I mean, we're, we're waiting to get some things back from, um, Tom. And once we get those, and we have a plan in-house as well, there are just a few little pieces that we need to slide in and we'll, we'll be complete.
Well, I think that, you know, I mean, I think the, the commission needs to, I'm just gonna say 48 hours.
Okay, 48 hours before it goes public?
Right.
Okay.
So that, you know, so, I mean, I'm just throwing that number out because I think we need to see it and.
Yeah, I don't want you to be caught off guard.
Right.
That's why I was mentioning, you know, but we're trying to meet all the requirements statutorily. And this timeline was given to us by the attorneys to, to meet everything that we needed to do.
So that's, that's Monday?
Yeah, I know.
Okay. Okay. They feel left out.
Right.
And I think even if they don't have any control, that's not the right word, if they don't have the skin in the game, still a notification, you know, even if it's written just a little differently would be the right thing to do.
Okay, I agree.
More work, sorry.
It's okay, that's what we're here for. So what you can expect in the next three months, this is where we were talking about the notifications. In, not notifications by mail, but communicating with the community, making sure that they understand what's happening and what's going on. So we would like to expand the program area and the incentive area in the next three months, and that would come through the adoption of the plan. And then engagement and education efforts. We would like to have workshops with these developers and other stakeholders, such as the pastors. Uh, that's something that Commissioner Henderson brought to my attention and I think is an excellent suggestion, but we would like to have a luncheon and talk to them about the incentives we'll be offering and the things that'll be taking places in their neighborhoods. Um, we, we expect the neighborhood communication to do a quarterly newsletter. One of the things that we've also learned since we've been working over there, not everyone has access to internet. Lots of the population doesn't even, they're not necessarily up to date on computers and those kind of things. So we're looking at sending quarterly newsletters and then taking this little, we're sorry, we missed you, going door to door, knocking on the door and letting them know we're working in the neighborhood and what, just the plan is, um, and what to expect. We also would like to have quarterly meetings. On the back of that door hanger, we would like to highlight those quarterly meetings and provide those dates that far in advance, so people will know we're meeting and where we're meeting, so that they can put that on their refrigerator and they can come and we can have an open dialogue quarterly with them. We're looking at May the 31st, having a, a kickoff event in the neighborhood. Um, we have created a, a list of things that we'd like to accomplish with that, some goals that we would like to accomplish with that. We have a couple of parcels of property that we've contacted the owners. We haven't, um, gotten just the okay and the agreement to work that out yet, but that's our goal, is to, to have a kickoff event there in, in the neighborhood. One of the things that's ongoing now is a structure inventory. You have to go door to door, Palmer's already been out, um, with his iPad photographing everything, documenting everything, they've created a form to upload it, so we'll be able to, to track that as the progress happens and be able to see what it started and create that baseline, um, for the plan. The surplus property is all ongoing. As I mentioned, the new house plans, that's something that we did with Fountain Avenue. We're already working with I-5 Design to, um, create some new plans that are a little more suited to the lot size over on the south side. The historic nominations in district is something we haven't talked about yet, but to, for tax credits to be available for a lot of property owners and for those churches, um, there, there's a large amount of churches in, just in this project area that there needs to be, they need to be on the National Register for Historic Places. And so we're working, um, Morgan in the department has, that's a really strong suit of hers, so she's working through some of that. She's already started those nominations and she's working with, um, CLG, so our local government, to, to make that happen. Uh, the special incentive menu, again, goes back to the banks, we'll partner with them and expand the incentive menu that we have. Any questions about that? I know it's lots, lots fast. The other thing are, is the signage that you see here. We would like to be able to put up these banners going through that area. We talked to Chris and, and that's a partnership. Angela designed those banners and, and did a fantastic job, but it would note the neighborhood that they're in. We would like to be able to kind of kick that off just to let people know where they are and what's going on and create some identity. And then if you'll notice, it says, "This lot isn't empty, it's full of opportunity." Call 247 and it's got our, our phone number.
That's great.
You know, it's.
These are kind of those visual ideas you're talking about that really helps to define the area. Do you wanna go all out?
You're looking like you're thinking, what are you thinking?
No, I mean, I'm, I'm liking everything, uh, the signs, the, the banners. Uh, are you talking about just doing it in the first, the first neighbor, or the first, section one?
Well, we'll probably do it in Walter Jotun and Uppertown.
Okay, which is?
Yeah, but it's, it's just in phase one.
Yeah, phase one.
Yes, just phase one. And the signs would be on the surplus properties.
In phase one.
In phase one, just in phase one.
Okay.
I'm, I'm smiling because I like it. I feel like we're finally moving some, moving in that direction.
That's what we wanted to hear.
I agree.
That's great, I appreciate that.
Any other thoughts?
Come on, DeWone, you got a question?
I was gonna say, Commissioner Thomas, we haven't heard from you.
Because everybody started asking the questions that would come to my mind earlier, but no, it sounds great, I'm looking forward to it. Like, this is great for Paducah, our south side, and appreciate the work y'all are doing.
Yeah, it's, um, it's hard work. Uh, I think we all know that. Uh, you know, we're, we're in year five, uh, you know, since we kicked off, so, uh, you know, of course, we had, uh, you know, we had COVID in the middle of that, you know, but we can't use that as an excuse anymore. And so I think we're on the right track and I appreciate all the hard work from all of you and, and particularly Palmer, you, getting out in, in the south side, being visible, being the face of the city, that's very important.
I like this man.
I appreciate that, thank you, Commissioner Henderson.
Get him a bodyguard or something.
And I thank y'all for this work and for setting this priority for south side. As you said, this has been a long time coming. And one thing that I am proud of is the time that we've had in the past year and a half, two years, um, in terms of building up the trust in the area, you know, starting with smaller incentives and, you know, individual programs, but this is really exciting. This is where we tie everything together and really set the stage going forward. And if I have anybody think, it's also really our departments, our staff, it's not just Carol, but it's Angela, it's Nancy, it's Josh, it's Morgan, it's all of us. I really am proud of our team putting all this together.
There's not a person in, in the department that has not had their hand in it. And Angela's done all the design work, um, you know, Josh has tried to keep us between the ditches when, to make sure we have all the statutes down and.
Who's keeping Josh between the ditches?
Nancy, if you want me to be honest. But we're, it, it's, it's been a group effort, so we appreciate the opportunity.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Progress. Okay, City Manager, any comments?
Um, Mayor, the commission just want to, uh, remind, uh, that and the public is that our next commission meeting will not be on our regular scheduled Tuesday night, it will be the Monday, um, just prior, so the 21st, it'll be a special called meeting, uh, that will allow us to have a quorum for, for that, um, that meeting. But I just wanted to remind the commission on that and just let the public know. And then, um, you know, earlier this meeting, we heard a lot of, uh, passionate discussion about people's property. Um, and I want the commission, I know the commission knows, and I want the public to understand that our team that's been out in that takes that, doesn't take that lightly, their efforts, their work, um, you know, sometimes, you know, going to four o'clock in the morning. And so all of their opportunities after we get through a disaster to sit down and reevaluate, most definitely, but I just want to commend our team from top to bottom, all the efforts they've been put forward to get us to this point. Fortunately, um, and while there was much debate as when the gates would go in and how we do that, you know, fortunately, the, the crest of the, the river is not gonna be as high as, as we were this weekend that we thought it was going to be. And so, uh, but we have some more rain coming, um, and what that may or may not do. And so again, just very proud of our team from top to bottom and all the efforts and work and didn't want tonight to go without the acknowledgement of that.
Yeah, I appreciate you, um, saying that. I was, uh, I'll be the first to admit, I was, uh, watching the river, uh, river forecast, river crest forecast, and, uh, I got pretty nervous this weekend, uh, you know, looking at, you know, the way the crest was moving back from Thursday, Wednesday, Tuesday, you know, and then when all the rain came, I guess it was on Saturday, you know, so it all came together, but the river god smiled upon us. And, uh, and, um, you know, we had some people here earlier, uh, you know, tonight that, you know, that were affected, that continue to be affected. And one of the issues, the crest is, you know, is, is not gonna be as high, but it's gonna last longer than what we originally thought. So there's gonna be people that are displaced for longer periods of time and, and so I, I was very serious in saying that I think when all this is over with, uh, I'd like to be a part of a meeting, sit down with the county emergency management and talk about, I mean, you know, it's been, 2019, it's been six years since we had this before, but I think that we always learn, you know, from things that happen. Communication is often at the root of a lot of evils. Uh, communication heals a lot of things and, um, so I, I know that City Manager attended a couple of meetings out at the Emergency Management Center of the county this weekend. I attended one on, attended one on Sunday. Uh, it was good to be there, you know, to see how decisions were being made. And, um, so, uh, I think a lot of learning goes on from these and we always want to improve. And, you know, really, that's the bottom line, we always want to improve. So, um, and I do want to thank, of course, you know, Darren and the whole team and Greg and his team for all the work that's gone into this. And, um, and I do appreciate, I know they're getting paid, but, you know, Jim Smith, uh, JM Smith did a great job helping us get the floodgates up. So they were really, you know, at the core of getting those gates up. And, you know, when you stop and think about disasters or flooding, I mean, the primary job that the city has, you know, is to get the gates up, you know, and to make sure they get up, you know, at the right time to protect our city. And, uh, it doesn't come often, you know, when we have to put them up, but, uh, you know, that's what we're focused on and we got it done, so congrats to everybody. So Commissioner, any comments?
Actually, Mayor, I do want to say, uh, I don't want to keep beating the, beating this thing over and over again, but I can't say enough how excited I am about what we received tonight, uh, from the south side, what's going to happen in the days ahead. But not just, I think I may have mentioned this to you perhaps yesterday, but not just our planning department, but I can't say thank you enough to our team. You know, I would, I would venture to say that there is not a, another commission or, or city that's as informed as we are. I mean, every time I looked at my email, it was 8:05 weather report, 8:06, 8:06 weather report. So when we got the information and so, uh, and there's not ever a time that, that I've called and asked something that it's not done. And I know that I perhaps don't say that enough, you know, thank, we thank you. If, if I don't know, it's nobody's fault but mine. And sometimes I don't know.
Well, like we talk, uh, I mean, I talk to all the commissioners, um, you know, we, we do our best to keep everybody informed of everything going on, but man, things happen in real time down here and sometimes, you know, they happen so quick and, and, uh, you know, you guys might hear something out in the community before somebody here in City Hall gets to tell you about it because it's spread so quickly. But we're doing our best, we can always improve and we'll continue to do that. But I'm, I'm proud of the commission because I think we are working as a team, so. Commissioner Smith, anything?
I'm good.
Mr. Thomas, anything? Okay, I would entertain a motion to, uh, go into executive session.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics. A specific proposal by a business entity where public discussion of the subject matter would jeopardize, jeopardize the location, retention, expansion, or upgrading of a business entity as permitted by KRS 61.810 subsection 1G.
Submove.
Second.
Carl Row.
Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Bray.
Aye. We will not be taking any action afterwards.